Let's come to order. Welcome to our work session. Shall we move Mr. Bennett up? Go ahead and hear him. Allow him to get home. There is dog, wife, dinner, whatever it is he wants to go home to. Basically, at Aaron's suggestion, we have invited someone from Tennessee School Boards Association to come down and talk to us about the issue of vouchers, which is looking like it, well, it already is an issue nationwide, it looks like it might be seriously considered in Tennessee this upcoming session. And so, if you're like me, you sort of know about the issue, but would like to have a little more information. And as we talked about at our last meeting, there are some districts around the state have issued statements or resolutions or whatever, expressing their opinion on that topic. And I don't know that we will have an opinion or want to express it, but I think this is a good first step. At the very least, we'll be educated a little bit. So unless there's objection, Randy, if you'll come forward, this is Randall Bennett. Randy, your exact title is...
Deputy Exec General Counsel.
Thank you for coming.
And I apologize that Lee Harold is not here, because I'll give the credit what credit's due. He is top-notch, he knows the Hill backwards and forwards, and can certainly give you a better presentation than I could, but his schedules would not allow him to be here tonight or tomorrow night. You have some materials on your desk. One thing that Lee did email me today from Jackson was a link to the latest bill that was filed by Senator Kelsey, Bill 2135. That was filed, I think, a week to 10 days ago, and I have looked through it, I've scrolled through it, but I haven't read it in depth, and I'm going to do that, but I wanted to give that to you, so you could take a look at it at your leisure. The other thing that I've got for you today is pulled from a report called Keeping Informed About School Vouchers, the one with the blue on it. Now, if you would like this full report, you can browse to their website and get it, because I've left out about 50 pages of conclusions and things like that. But what I did was give you the cover with the name of the organization, Center for Education Policy. If you'll put that in any search engine you use, it'll bring you to that website, and you can download this entire thing. Now, the second page I'm going to skip for now, but the third page is the appendix that was included with that, and this is a wonderful, brief summary of voucher studies that this organization has done. And if you'll see over on the left, there's the title column, then after that, who sponsored or published it, and what year it was done. And that's the big thing with statistics. People are always saying, "Well, yeah, this is a great study, but when was it done?" And the thing I like about this appendix that includes it, I'd like to hear the very first one, it was done in 2011, who the author is, PJ Wolf in that first one, University of Arkansas, and then the major findings in bullet point format. And as you can see, one of the findings, the very first one, is overall equal rates of academic growth for voucher and non-voucher students. In other words, vouchers are not having the kind of effect that some people claim that they are. Now, that's been found in a number of these studies, and I'll leave those to you to look at, but I do want to call your attention back to the second page again. I've included two things on that page. The first thing is Article 11, Section 12 of the Tennessee Constitution, and if you look at the second sentence, "The General Assembly shall provide for the maintenance, support, and eligibility standards of a system of pre-public schools." The "shall" is not an option. The General Assembly must have a public school system in place. And the next sentence goes on and talks about how the General Assembly may establish higher education, post-secondary, and things like that. But the constitutional mandate and the obligation here in Tennessee is for our General Assembly to provide that system of pre-public schools. Now, the position statement that your delegate assembly has taken in years past and will be asked to consider again in just a couple of weeks at our conference is right below that, and it says, "The TSBA advocates that funds raised by general taxation for education purposes should be administered by public officials and should not be used to support privately operated schools through tuition tax credits, vouchers, or block grants." That's the position that we have at the association. I fully expect that to be reaffirmed at the delegate assembly this year, particularly with what's happening right now, which is starting to come on. But this is the association's official statement. Now, anything I say beyond that probably is my opinion, and I've got lots of them. You know, you can't live for 50-some years and not have lots of opinions. And my first thing that I'll throw out is that, to me, I question whether the General Assembly really has the authority to do that, because as you can see, the constitutional mandate indicates public schools. But there seems to be some sort of feeling that the General Assembly could take part, and they're looking in this bill to take approximately half the per pupil expenditure for the state and give that to the person as a voucher, so they can put their child in private school. Basically, it boils down to public money being used to support private schools. Now, I have no qualms with people sending their children to private schools. I don't. As a matter of fact, it's your choice as a parent to send your child wherever they want. I don't know why we would want to send somebody here in Rutherford County to private schools. We've got such a great school system here, and y'all have been doing so well the last few years, and I applaud you for that. But if a parent chooses to do that, they've got that right. But you go back to the constitutional mandate, every person who lives in this state has an obligation to support a system of public schools, whether they be persons with children or persons without children, whether they're actually utilizing the public school system by having their child go there, or whether, like me, their child's 36 and I've got grandchildren, and those grandchildren don't live here, so the money that I'm paying in is going to support the public school system. We all have an obligation to support public schools, parent and non-parent. And my opinion is that if the state gives vouchers to non-parent, I mean, to parents to send their child to private school, then that parent is not paying their fair share of the public school system. If they want to go to private school, I think that's up to them to pay for it. But the bottom line is, private school or not, they've got an obligation to continue to support the public schools. I've lived here for 15 years, I've been paying Rutherford County taxes for 15 years. Got my bill just a few weeks ago. Did y'all get yours? Yeah. I didn't see any friendly things on there from Mr. Beatty that I could have extra time or anything either, but I pay that tax bill each year, and I do not utilize the Rutherford County School District. But as a citizen of the state of Tennessee, I've got an obligation to support this school district through my tax money, both state and local taxes. And if you follow the analogy that money should be given to parents who wish to send their child to private school, then I would argue that anyone who says, "Hey, I'm not utilizing this service," I should get a tax break. You know, send that money back to me, I'm not using it at all. It just doesn't make sense. It doesn't wash. And if you carry that analogy out, it can get really ridiculous at points in time. So that's kind of where I see this going, and if we start allowing vouchers to drain off money from public schools, we're going to be hurting. We really are. And I've just rambled on enough here anyway, let me just stop and see if you've got questions I can answer. I don't know if I can or not, but I'm certainly willing to try.
Are any districts taking formal positions against vouchers?
Yes. We've had...
Something Knoxville, yeah.
And Lee had told me that there are several doing it. We just sent out a call, I think it was last week, he sent out an email to all board chairs and all superintentions, you got that, requesting that you take a look at the very last page of this, which is a copy of the resolution, and that the board consider the possibility of passing this resolution and getting it back, because the more we can take to the General Assembly and say, "Look, these are the systems that are opposed to it," then I think the stronger our position is. And we're starting that now, because, as I said, this bill was filed last week, and there's a lot of movement taking place now. We need to really have this in place prior to the General Assembly coming back in January. But I don't know who, but I do know that Steve, Lee, has talked to several folks that have already passed it, and they're working on getting him the copy.
Did I hear you to say that up to half of the state money?
That's what they're looking at, up to half the state per pupil expenditure. You'll find that in this bill toward, I think, the last three or four pages somewhere. But basically, all of the money, all the per pupil money would not necessarily be going to the parent for vouchers, but a portion of it would, up to half, which is still going to have an adverse effect on school districts, particularly if quite a few are doing it. Now, some people think this is similar to charter schools, but it's not. Charter schools are still public schools. They're chartered by you. You're the chartering agency, you make that determination, and I know you've got one that you're looking at right now. But what we're talking about here is giving parents money to spend in private schools, which is vastly different than a charter school situation.
Wayne?
Certainly behooves us to be in touch with all of our state representatives, from senators to the House, because this thing could catch fire, just sweep if they're not hearing from us. And also, in some of our conversations with other TSBA members, we've been calling this the Private School Recovery Act, because, you know, they've lost so many students out of the private schools because of economic environment we're presently in. And this really would save them if something like this was to go through.
Well, as most of you know, and I'm not necessarily taking, you know, coming down on one side or the other partisan politics, but as most of you know, the General Assembly is dominated by the Republican Party, and this is a strong Republican position. Now, those of you that were paying attention a few years ago when I ran here know what party I'm with, and so you understand that I'm talking about the party that I support. But I don't support the whole concept of vouchers. I think it's a mistake, and I think it's a mistake that the Republican Party should back away from, too. But we've got a strong Republican base in the General Assembly now, and this is one of the key bills that they're trying to get passed, so I don't know how that will go. But I do think it's important to let everyone know where we stand on that issue. Boards of Education represent significant parts of their community. Each one of you, if you look at the number of votes you pulled in the last election, you potentially can influence that many people, because that many people went in and pulled the lever for you, just like I pulled the lever for Mr. Blair. You'd had to sign up, too. I don't know about that, I haven't. But when you take a formal position like that, the folks who voted for you, put you in office to run the school district, I think give what your action is greater, they give it greater credibility, simply because of who you are, and the fact that you're here running the school, you understand that, and they put you in the position of running the schools in the first place. And so, because of that, I think you have a lot of credibility, and I think you have a lot of influence, too. This is one of those times that I hope you all decide to utilize that influence.
Tim, did I see you?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, would, you kind of made the point that we don't see a strong overall position here with private schools in Rutherford County. There's some good ones, but relatively small population here compared to some others. Would you see this having its roots in the larger population areas where you do see a lot of private schools?
Well, the bill talks a lot about free and reduced lunch students and, you know, urban areas and different things like that, too. But you're on the fringe here. I don't really know what the impact would be here. I think as close as we are to Nashville, and as large as the county is, and the number of students that you have, you have a very good-sized school district here. What's the number now?
Thirty-nine plus.
Thirty-nine thousand. See, I mean, that's very close to what the Shelby County District was before this whole merger thing started. They were in the 40s. So you're getting up there. You're a large system, and I think that the potential to affect Rutherford County is pretty significant.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Bennett? Aaron?
I don't know if you were prepared on other issues, but there are other things that we've not taken a position on yet, but the question of an appointed director of schools is always something that we might anticipate would come up. Also, the calendar question may come back up again this legislative session. Are there other things that you would want to make us aware of?
Those, to me, are the two biggest things that are pending out there. The appointed director of schools seems to have gained ground the last few years, too. And the calendar issue, I think, is a misunderstood issue as well. I think if you mandate a late starting time, then basically what you're going to do is cut into the summer from the other end of the year, and you're not really going to save anything. And I'm not sure that everyone thinks that through, because bottom line is, you've got to get in 180 days, you've got a schedule that you generally try to follow, and if you have, if you can't start till the last Friday or the last Monday in August or whenever it is they want you to start, then that's going to push you into May and June before you can, and then you have to take the snow days into account. So the tourist argument is an interesting argument, but the bottom line is, you're going to lose it one side or the other, plus you've got the testing issue at the end of the year, and that's the key. You've got to get enough time in so that you can have adequate time to teach the children what they need to know to pass those tests.
In your capacity as deputy counsel, would you anticipate, if they were to do something in vouchers, would TSBA be in a position to be a plaintiff in questioning the General Assembly's authority?
I'm not sure we would have the standing to be a plaintiff. I think it would take, well, I mean, you're talking about the constitutionality of the statute itself.
Right.
Perhaps we might with that.
Okay.
I thought we were talking, I was thinking something else. Yeah, if you're talking about constitutionality, perhaps we might. That would have to be something our board of directors would take up and make a decision on. And I don't know that that would go anywhere or not. I mean, that just may be my little wild argument, but I think it has some validity. At least, I hope we can get someone to ask for an AG's opinion on it, because I'd really like to see what the AG has to say about it.
Indeed. Other questions or comments? Well, Mr. Bennett, thank you for bringing us this information.
Thank you for inviting me, I appreciate it. Y'all have a good work session.
Great to see you.
I'm going to go home and eat some supper.
All right, thank you.
Good night, sir.
So I guess we will take a look at this material we have, and if you're ambitious, go to the website and see the full report, and we've got an incredible rush on making the decision, but we'd want to do something before the end of the year, certainly.
Okay, will we leave that on the agenda, then, for the meeting? Would we have this as an agenda item again? We won't have Mr. Bennett here.
You mean, voting on a resolution?
Okay. I guess that's what I'm asking. You mentioned we certainly want to do something before the end of the year, but I'm thinking, would we then be prepared as a board? I'm interested in work session discussion. Do we want to have this as an agenda item for tomorrow night? Personally, I'm comfortable to make a vote on it tomorrow night and sign up on this resolution. I've looked into it, and I'm comfortable with that, but I don't want to be too aggressive. There's a lot of information here to try and comprehend.
I think I'd rather proceed a little more deliberately myself.
Okay.
But I'd like to take a close look at this information.
Okay.
But I'll bow to the wishes of the board.
When will we meet again?
November 17th, I believe. Seventeenth.
I mean, as long as we get a good 30 to 45 days, you know.
I mean, because I'll do it before the General Assembly convenes, I think, we're fine, but I would rather at least wait till the next round of meetings. Does that sound okay to everybody?
In that case, then, as agenda maintenance, then, if we could drop it from tomorrow's agenda and move it to November 17th, I think that would be appropriate.
Let's see, well, it's just on there as a legislative update, right?
Item 12, school voucher.
Yeah, well, there's not an action item, really.
Okay.
So...
Good enough.
Yeah, I'll probably announce that as an opportunity for further discussion if there's any for tomorrow, but I wouldn't anticipate them there being...
We would be, yes.
Yes, sir. Questions on the agenda? And the consent agenda? Okay. Spotlight, I assume, we'll do tomorrow?
Yes.
Number nine.
Oh, business. We've kicked this around for several years, and we don't really have anything in procedure or policy, but it's kind of been reflected on the admission, application that county had priority, admission over city, and our intention is to eliminate that so that county and city kids both have equal access to McFadden School. And the exception there would be in the case of sibling, which they have priority over regardless of where your residence is.
Wayne?
As far as, I mean, we have three Maggie's, so is this basically, we'll get them in line, we'll take that designation off of all three, or do we have that designation on all three presently?
What's, we've talked to Dr. Hilton at Smyrna before. There's no, it doesn't really apply to...
It's not central at all.
Central. But I don't think it's an issue in Smyrna at all, and I don't think it's on that application. But if it is, I'll make sure it's taken off there. We talked to Dr. Blair, he, you know, he said now that, you know, we both have kind of felt that way for a while, there's ample, you know, there's adequate space for kids, so I think it's the right thing to do.
I do, too. This is something that I've heard about throughout my time on the board, and I think it's a change that's long overdue, so I'm glad to see it.
It sparks some comments over the years.
Just a few. Other discussion on that item? Okay, number 10.
Approval of 2011-12 Textbook Adoption Committee Participants. Each year, the state requires the local board of education to approve textbook selecting committees on state form ED 2150. Textbook adoption subjects for the year are art, business, technology, trade, and industrial, construction, and transportation, computer science, driver education, English, health sciences education, trade and industrial, human services and law, marketing education, vocational, pardon me, vocal, and general ed, music, music, spelling, theater, trade and industrial, graphic communication, media, information technology, web, visual arts. Recommend that you approve 2011-12 Textbook Adoption Committees that presented.
Question on that item? Okay, number 11.
Rutherford Education Association REA requests participate in collaborative conferencing. Ms. Barnes is going to talk to you for a minute about that. We've been in touch with, what, TSBA?
Yes, ma'am.
And trying to remain in compliance with what's required of us. We've established a committee, she'll talk about it for a minute, Paula.
In early October, the REA did submit to the Board of Education, to Mr. Gill, a request to participate or initiate collaborative conferencing, and they did that by polling their members, and they did have over the 15% of their members respond that they wanted to pursue that, which is the requirement for the percentage to move to the next step. The next step, then, is for the county to appoint a special question committee for the purpose of designing a poll to proceed with the two questions that have to be asked of all eligible employees. So Mr. Gill has helped us to identify a special question committee, which will be three board members and three teacher representatives, one from REA, one from PET, and one that's unaffiliated, and they're going to meet tomorrow to talk about how to conduct the poll, ask the questions of all eligible employees, and those would be teachers that are assigned to the schools that are not referred to as management personnel, which would be principals, assistant principals, and supervisory nature. So they'll ask the question, "Do you want to pursue collaborative conferencing, and if yes, who do you want to represent you?" So there are specific questions that have to be asked per state law. That poll will be designated, we'll select a specific date, how it's going to be conducted will be a committee decision, and then we have to do that and get a total of the responses no larger than December 1st. So we're on a short leash right here. We didn't expect to be doing it this fall. We thought it would take place next fall after we received training sometime after January, but the law does say that an organization may proceed with this question as early as October 2011, and that's what the REA has done, so we'll move forward with the special question committee.
And this is the first, I don't, I'd like to tell the board about something one day before that happens, but as Paula said, we really weren't expecting this to come around until next year, and so with the deadline to get the election done, we had to move pretty quickly. So I've asked Mr. Blair and Mr. Hodge to serve along with me on this committee, and then there'll be three teachers.
Right, we identified the president of REA, the president of PET or PERC, which is the Pet Association of Rutherford County, and then a teacher that's unaffiliated that's elementary, because that one is a high school and one's a middle school, so we have a good representation. And we did consult with TSBA to make sure we were following the steps accurately, since we, again, didn't expect it to be this fall.
So that meeting is at 3:45 tomorrow, and with any luck, we will agree on a process for conducting this election, and then, once that election is conducted, there'll be a month-long gap before anything else happens.
Well, depending on the result of the poll. If the poll, if there is a majority vote, which is 50% plus one, then we have to, we being the system, have to identify a number of management personnel that will sit on the collaborative conferencing committee, and depending on the number that we appoint, the teacher organizations will appoint the same number, and that number will be based on percentage of their, of persons selecting their organization for representation, so it's all a percentage process. And that committee has to be appointed by December 1st as well, again, following polling results. But it's all a workable process. I think we have time to complete this, we just have to move forward with it pretty quickly. Then the last step is, providing that the majority does vote in favor, you also have to announce the results and make that committee and post it to the public by January 1st. And then we do stop until we have training and know what we're doing from there.
So is, if another organization wants to go through the same process, will this all go over and happen again?
No, sir. Actually, once one organization comes forward, then anybody that has, any organization has a presence in the system will be included on the ballot.
Okay, good. Other questions or comments about this? It's all new to all of us, so we're doing our best to go through this process.
One of the provisions of the law was that the requesting organization would shoulder the burden of this poll as far as cost and everything.
Correct.
Does that mean that then a part of the meeting tomorrow afternoon will be discussing what that budget is and REA's responsibility?
Yes, something that you might associate, that would be copy cost. If you have to run 2,800 ballots to distribute to the schools for the purpose of the poll, then you might estimate costs for something like that. And that organization, being the REA, does have to shoulder whatever cost is associated with it. Correct. And there is a packet in your packet with a broader explanation of its law. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? I want to just call it housekeeping, it's more important than that, but it's primarily making sure we get this election set up. I'll bring you a report back tomorrow about what happened.
I was just following up on Tim's question. I'm not sure I understood. Every organization, teacher organization, has an opportunity to be represented, or that...
Yeah, Paul, we'll come back to that. On the ballot, it will only be two organizations plus unaffiliated, isn't that right, Ms. Barnes?
Yes, correct. Any organization during the month of October of any given year they selected this year has the right to initiate the question. So REA initiated it within their membership. They took a vote, and they came back to us and said, "We have at least 15% of our members saying they want to move forward." So now in the poll, the law says that you include any organization that has a presence in your system on the poll. So the two questions are, do you want to participate in collective collaborative conferencing, yes or no? And then the second question is, if yes, who do you want to be represented? And you'll list REA, PET, and unaffiliated, and none of the above, because the law says, if you check no, then you have the option to say none of the above is one of your choices. Make sense? We only have two organizations in our system that are professional organizations. There is a third one in Tennessee, but it's not in this system, and I don't call it...
You know, but at one time, the language was that if you were a member of a mass society or some other group, what happened to their voice?
In consultation with TSBA, it was only professional organizations in Tennessee, and they said there are only three, TEA, PET, and then there's one more that's somewhere in West Tennessee, and again, it's just in one or two places.
So what, here's a hard question, it seems hard. What's the difference between unaffiliated and none of the above? If you say none of the above, what's the effect of, who's representing, nobody?
Nobody.
That would be a strange choice for someone to make, wouldn't it?
It would be, because if you end up collaboratively conferencing, everyone's still going to benefit from whatever decisions are made. But it does give that person a choice to say, "I don't want anybody to represent me." So, yeah, but that's the way the law's written.
Clear as mud. Appreciate the efforts of Fallen Angel in trying to...
Thank you.
...to get all this straight.
... thirteen, TSBA Board of Distinction.
I don't know, Joyce, how many years ago has it been now? Three or two?
Three.
Three that we went through the process that, uh...
Which runs out in November of eleven.
Or distinction expires in November. That's basically, yeah.
Correct.
So, the question is whether or not we wanna go through the process, uh, again.
We already started it, didn't we, with our self-evaluation?
Well, that's one of the steps that's required. We never really made a, a decision as a body whether or not we wanted to, to do it again. Joyce, do you happen to recall what all the different steps are? I should...
We have to review the, um, policies annually, uh, participate in a retreat of at least seven hours, conduct a superintendent evaluation, develop, update it, an update five-year plan, and that needs to be ongoing. Adopt the TSBA Code of Ethics, which that's fine. Was represented the last two years at the TSBA delegate assembly. Now, uh, we also have to have, um, four people going to the TSBA convention this year, and I do not have four people signed up. Achieved at least one-third of the board, three members, Level Two in the TSBA Boardmanship Award. We're okay on that. And then we have to have, uh, two different board members, boards attend a meeting from two different boards and evaluate us. And basically, the others, we're okay on, that's...
So, that's like a piece of cake.
A seven-hour retreat's a piece of cake?
Well, you know, we, we hung out together not too long, for that long, and did okay.
No, no, it was, it was good. I, I have nothing against this, and I'm certainly willing to do it if that's the wishes of the board. I'm not sure these, all these individual steps that it takes to get it are, are good, so, I mean, whether or not the actual label means anything, uh, I'm not sure that it does.
I guess that's the question I'd have, as, as a new member. You, you guys have been through it, I have not, you know? At the end of the day, it's a nice, it sounds nice, but does it really wash up?
We got a plaque that we had to pay for, didn't we, Joyce? It irritated Ms. Mike.
But I think the steps all continue to add credibility to what we do, that it's, that it's just not, you know, getting elected and sitting here, it's, it's, you know, continually to, to improve and advance, you know, what we were elected to do.
Well, so if we, if we decide to do this, we're committing to do a, a retreat of at least seven hours, a superintendent evaluation, the rest of it, we're already doing.
We're gonna have two other people going to the convention.
How many are going now, just two?
Two, to the convention part.
Right. Then we'll need two volunteers to go to the TSBA convention. So, what's your pleasure?
I'm moved that we, that we can keep...
We can't really vote, we'll, we'll take an informal poll.
Oh, that's right, that's right, I'm sorry. I say we do.
Yeah, Aaron, you're the, let us know what you have to say.
I was gonna say, you're the catalyst on this, yeah. Um, I, I think it's important for us, it's a TSBA, uh, program that they're asking for boards to strive to. TSBA does a lot for us, a lot to represent us. Lee is up there on Capitol Hill. I think it is a, a, a proper gesture on our part to participate in this program and give TSBA our support and credibility. I think it lends, uh, TSBA, uh, more weight by having boards that say, "We're on board with what TSBA is, is trying to, to accomplish," and, uh, and a greater, greater, higher standard of excellence. So, for that reason, I think it was important for us to have done it three years ago, and as we come to the expiration of that, I think it's important for us to renew it. Uh, I, I think that we're in a position where, you know, I, I repeatedly say, "Top five school system in Tennessee, absolutely," and we may just be the number one school system in Tennessee. As such, we should be a leader in Board of Distinction.
Well said. Other thoughts?
I just wonder what it costs, TSBA.
That's a good question.
What, what do they charge us for this distinction?
Which is a, uh, that plaque is a hundred dollars. You have to buy a plaque.
But it is a nice plaque.
Can we not peel, can we not recycle the last one? Change the date?
Guys, I'll pay for the plaque, okay? It's just, we'll, okay?
Well, see, that's on the record now. Do you accept that?
Informally, I'm, I'm in agreement with Aaron.
Okay, other thoughts?
I also agree.
We have three enthusiasts, I don't know, is that four? No, that's three.
Go ahead.
What's, go ahead, man.
We got four.
We follow. Say hello, hair, pipe.
All right, and Joyce, if you'll, you've already actually started the mechanism moving. Uh, two of you who are enthusiastic need to volunteer to go to the convention, that'd be step one.
I've already volunteered.
I mean, two of you who are not signed up will need to volunteer. And then, uh, we'll, uh, we'll just proceed. We, we've taken a break of a few months. This is something that I think we've all agreed with philosophically, is that we need to periodically review our policies. And we, we did that through one entire year, and we've had a little bit of a break now, but we're, we're gonna start doing that again, and...
That'll be on the next meeting.
Next agenda, there'll be a chunk, so if you would read them and think about them, that would be very good, I think.
We're gonna have four.
Okay. Anything else on, on that?
I want to announce about the policy meeting.
Is that date?
It's on November the thirtieth at five o'clock.
Policy meeting, November thirtieth, five p.m. An agenda to be formed, uh, any general discussion?
It was, no, no, where was it?
Thirty.
Thirtieth?
Chairman, in keeping with, uh, board policy, when we go, go and do, uh, continuing education, last week I went to, uh, board advocacy, uh, training at TSBA. Uh, I thought it was outstanding and provoked a, a couple of ideas that, uh, that I may work on some more. A big thing was the, the success of our parent academy and, uh, and what that can do for community support, uh, helping the community to understand, uh, what the school board is doing, as well as, uh, what the school system offers.
Okay, thanks for that. Other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we're meeting tomorrow night at five o'clock, so we'll see you then.